I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I have a couple of opening comments. First, our Montgomery County Department of Health and Human Services is holding their annual Spring Clean Drive, which started on March 20th and goes through May 26th to support low-income families who are clients of our HHS programs. They are looking for donations of cleaning supplies such as all-purpose cleaner, laundry detergent, dish soap, bathroom cleaner, sponges, trash bags, paper towels, and mops and brooms. They are also asking for toiletry donations such as baby wipes, hair care products for adults and children, toothpaste and toothbrushes, soap and body wash, lotion and deodorant. There's a drop-off box location at the Human Services Center on 1430 DeKalb Street, or you can donate items through the HHS Amazon wishlist by scanning the QR code on the website. And for more information, you can visit www.montco PA dot org slash HHS donations. Next, Montgomery County has partnered with the National Association of Counties to help residents save on prescription and healthcare costs with the Live Healthy Prescription Health and Dental Discount Program. This free, no-cost prescription discount program will help residents save 80% on generic prescriptions and 40% on brand-name prescription medications in more than 65,000 pharmacies from across the nation, including those for pets. There's also low-fee health discounts, which will help residents save 15% to 75% on vision, hearing, and lab services, in addition to diabetes supplies, imaging, and 24/7 unlimited telemedicine access. Low-fee dental discounts will help residents save 15% to 75% on a variety of dental procedures. And clinic discounts are also available. Residents can save 15% on many services at the medical walk-in clinics located in select CVS pharmacies and Target stores. Any resident in Montgomery County can enroll to receive a discount card to take advantage of the savings. You can also download the card onto your smartphone. There are no age requirements, no forms to fill out, and no exams necessary. And for more information and to sign up, visit www.livehealthycard.com or call toll-free at 1-877-321-2651. And next, I'm going to promote two races that are going on in our community. The first is Man on Main Streets: Race to End Hunger. As I've mentioned many times in the past, food insecurity is still a big issue for over 6% of county individuals and families. And the recent loss of SNAP benefits is making it even harder for people to get enough nutritious food to eat. The county has committed $500,000 to buy food to support our food pantries. And one of our partners, Man on Main Street, is holding their 12th Annual Race to End Hunger on April 29th in Lansdale. The proceeds from this event go to support programs and services for those in need in the North Penn region. Last year's record-breaking race raced over $104,000, and registrants will have the opportunity to participate in either a 10K run, a 5K run, or a fun run, which is approximately one mile. Registration is open until race day, so please consider signing up. And you can find more information about registration, volunteering, course maps, or donations at manonmainstreet.org/peerh. And that was a forward slash there. And one of my favorite races, the Valley Forge Park Revolutionary Five Mile Run. On April 16th at 8:30 a.m., Valley Forge Park will hold their 17th Annual Valley Forge Revolutionary Five Mile Run through the scenic Valley Forge Historical Park, organized by our Tourism Board. Since its inception in 2006, Rev Run has raised more than $550,000 for park infrastructure improvement projects and programming to enhance visitor experiences such as new educational kiosks, storytelling benches, updated infrastructure, trails, and trail connections. All proceeds from the Run go towards the improvement and enhancement of the park. Registrants will have the option to either run the five-mile course or walk the two-mile course or participate virtually. And to register and for more information, visit www valleysforges.org/revolutionaryrun. Registration ends on April 15th at 12:00 p.m. And finally, you know, this month is a month of religious significance for many in our community. The Muslim community is celebrating Ramadan. Passover started this week, and then, of course, Easter is on this Sunday. So I just want to wish everyone, no matter what your faith is, peace, and let's be good to one another.
Okay.
Thanks, Commissioner Winder.
You've got me excited about a couple of these runs, but I won't be doing any of them vicariously through you.
I am starting the Man on Main Bridge, so I could start that and give you water along the way.
Maybe, maybe I'll think about it. Okay. So, good morning, everyone. So a few comments for me. So, Week of the Young Child. So first, I want to begin my comments by recognizing that this week, April 1st through the 7th, is National Week of the Young Child, sponsored by the National Association for the Education of Young Children. The Week of the Young Child focuses public attention on the needs of young children and their families. It also recognizes the early childhood programs and services that meet those needs, my son being one of them. Week of the Young Child was first established in 1971, recognizing that the early childhood years lay the foundation for children's success in school and later in life. Here in Montgomery County, our Early Learning Resource Center provides a single point of contact for Montgomery County families, early learning service providers, and community members looking to gain information and access to services that support high-quality childcare and early learning programs. This week, early childhood educators are making the Week of the Young Child through daily classroom celebration themes and other interactive activities for our kids. This observation is time to recognize that children's opportunities are our responsibilities. We recommit ourselves to ensuring that each and every child experiences the type of early environment that will promote their early learning. This means at home, at childcare, at school, and in the community. Through the county's Early Learning Resource Center, childcare professionals can obtain support in building quality outcomes for children by working with quality coaches to achieve Keystone Star III and IV status, build connections with community partners, and support children and families in accessing additional services such as PA pre-K counts, Head Start, home visiting, and early intervention. The Early Learning Resource Center is located at the Human Services Center in Narrestown and can be contacted at 610-278-3707, or by visiting their website at www.montco PA dot org forward slash E L R C. That was a mouthful, but very important. Next, I wanted to acknowledge Sexual Assault Survivors Awareness Month, which is the month of April, and it marks the 22nd anniversary of Sexual Assault Awareness Month. This year's theme is Drawing Connections: Prevention Demands Equity. This campaign calls on all individuals, communities, organizations, and institutions to change ourselves and the system surrounding us to build racial equity and respect. Sexual Assault Awareness Month brings attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and impacts every person in the community. This month's campaign aims to raise public awareness about sexual violence and educate communities about how to prevent it. Systems of oppression such as racism, sexism, classism, heterosexism, ageism, ableism, and more contribute to higher rates of sexual harassment, assault, and abuse. Unfortunately, those same groups are also the most impacted inequitable systems of repression in our society. For the entire month of April, the county courthouse in Narrestown will be illuminating in teal the ribbon color that symbolizes Sexual Assault Awareness Month. On Monday, Victim Services of Montgomery County held a rally on the courthouse steps to bring awareness to this cause. VFC provides advocacy and counseling for individuals affected by sexual violence and other crimes and promotes awareness in the community through education. During the last two years, more than 2,500 sexual abuse or assault survivors countywide sought services from Victim Services Center. And over the last year, VFC has assisted more than 1,000 people through its 24-hour hotline. Victim Services representatives accompany victims to hospital examinations and court hearings and assist victims in filing for protection for abuse orders. VFC's Family Therapy Program provides intensive psychotherapy treatment for child survivors and their non-offending parents or caregivers and the siblings. I encourage anyone who needs help to call Victim Services 24-hour hotline at 888-521-0983. More information about our Victim Services Center of Montgomery County can be found at their website at www.victimservicescenter.org. And then last one, I'm almost done. Green Lane Park Master Plan Kickoff. Finally, I'd like to remind residents that the master plan update for Green Lane Park is currently underway. We have published a series of public meetings and other interactive public tools to inform the master plan update. All interested citizens are invited to attend and provide feedback. Public input on potential improvements to enhance and protect Green Lane Park's recreational amenities will be accepted during the public meeting over the next year. Park users can also provide feedback at any time through completing an online survey, adding to a Wiki map, or contributing to the iNaturalist and eBirds apps for Green Lane Park. The first public meeting was held last night, and additional meetings will be held in September, December, and March 2024. Residents can check the county website at www.montco PA dot org forward slash Green Lane Park for additional details and information. I encourage everyone to take some time to provide us with your input on the planning process, and those are my remarks.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. When I first took office in January of 2016, I expressed the critical need that we champion all efforts to revitalize Narrestown, the county seat here in Montgomery County. And I'm excited to report that last week I had the opportunity to attend a special event at the Elmwood Park Zoo, where there's a lot of construction projects underway that will really improve Narrestown, and it's exciting to see this happen. So in 2024, the Elmwood Park Zoo will celebrate its 100th anniversary, which is an incredible accomplishment. And to lead the way into the next 100 years, there's a series of construction projects, including a new welcome center, a new veterinarian medical center, there's changes to the parking lot. So they're investing a lot of dollars to improve the zoo, and that's what makes Narrestown unique. We have that attraction. Not many other counties, let alone county seats, have a zoo located in their area. So it's great to see that the Elmwood Park Zoo is expanding and thriving, and that will definitely help with the revitalization of Narrestown. I'd also like to announce that there's a series of household hazardous waste events taking place across the county. A lot of residents accumulate different items that they have trouble throwing away, such as paint, used engine oil, and other items that you can't throw out in your normal trash days. So up on the screen, you'll see there's a series of events taking place this spring. The first one is Saturday, April 29th, at the Blaretown Middle School in Gilbertsville. There's one Saturday, May 6th, at Oak Ridge Elementary School in Harleysville. Saturday, May 20th, at Temple Ambler's Campus. Saturday, June 17th, at the Narrestown Area High School. Saturday, June 24th, at the Abington Middle School. Saturday, September 23rd, at the Spring Ford Ninth Grade Center in Royers Ford. And also Sunday, October 22nd, at the Lower Merion Transfer Station in the Penn Valley section of Lower Merion. So these are some opportunities this spring and also in the fall that the residents should utilize to disregard these hazardous waste items. You do need to schedule an appointment to participate. You can register by visiting montco PA recycles dot org. If you have any questions, you can call 610-278-3618, or email recycling@montgomerycountypa.gov. But this is a great service. Many of our residents have utilized it in the past, so I want to make sure that the community is aware of these opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move on to announcements, presentations. First up is Matt Edmund from our planning department, Matt Popek.
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners. Good to see you. Thank you for having us here today. Myself and Matthew Popek from our staff are here to, as we do every spring, to sort of officially announce the county transportation program and to talk a little bit about what it does and what to expect for this year. There's a reason why we do it earlier than this program actually opens, and I'll get to that by the end. So what we're going to do is we're going to take a couple minutes here, and we're going to explain four things. Kelly, if you can advance the slide. We're going to, for the sake of yourselves as commissioners, for the sake of the public, for the sake of the press, for the sake of our municipalities who actually apply to this program, we're going to talk about four things. We're going to say, what is the county transportation program itself? What has it accomplished? What do people need to know about year six? And then, of course, what comes next after Matt and I leave this room and the program starts to ramp up during the course of the year? So with that, Kelly? All right, what is the program? Question number one. So, very simple terms. The CTP, as we call it, because it's just easier to use an acronym, as it always is the case in planning, it's a competitive grant program. It's meant for our 62 municipalities, and it's money for transportation infrastructure. How is it funded? It's funded through the $5 vehicle registration fee that the county collects and has been collecting since early 2017. Now, a lot of that money goes towards county bridges. It's in our capital program, in our capital budget in other ways. But every year, for the last six years, the county commissioners, yourselves, have put $1 million of that money into the budget for this program. And let me explain why, Kelly. The reason why it's needed is this, quite simply. We have 62 municipalities in Montgomery County, and roughly a third of them, 21, have no county-owned roads or bridges in them. So every year, when the county government budgets to improve our roads and bridges using, in some part, $5 vehicle registration fee money, there are 21 municipalities that that money cannot go to because they don't have a county-owned bridge or road in it. So this is a way for us to make sure that those municipalities are represented when their residents, like any one of us do in our places, when we pay the extra $5 per our vehicle that we register, when it comes back to the county. This is an opportunity for people in those 21 places to see that investment back in their communities. It depends on their leaders and their municipality having a project, and there is a competitive process I'll get to, but it opens the door. It allows that to happen. And our municipalities, they own a lot of transportation infrastructure. We have the numbers up there. Over 2,700 miles of roads and 330 bridges and over 1,100 signals, right? And whenever all of us pay gasoline taxes to the state, some of that money comes actually back to the county and forms part of our budget, but some of it goes to every municipality in the Commonwealth, including our 62. And so for Montgomery County municipalities, the median liquid fuels payment, that's what they call it, liquid fuels funds, that's the piece of the gas tax that comes back to our municipalities and to the county. The median liquid fuels payment to our municipalities is roughly $348,000. It's gone up a little bit since last year. It's quite a bit below where it was in 2019 before the pandemic. But a place like Warsetor, for instance, they get a little bit above that median, $364,000, and they have 55 miles of township-owned roads. And based on how much it costs to repave a road or a segment of road, and if the repaving lasts 20 years, they will never catch up. So that's one reason why this program's important. It helps us to reinvest some of the transportation investment back into the municipal pot. Kelly? So we have four goals for this. We've had them since the beginning. This is the four goals that the planning commission staff and the commissioners have emphasized. One is to equitably distribute the registration revenue, like I said, to make sure that every municipality gets a chance to get some of this back, to fund projects everywhere in the county, to increase the overall investment levels, and to also meet the goals of the county's comprehensive plan. Kelly? So what has it accomplished? I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Popek real quick to give you guys a rundown of what we've done over the last five years.
Thanks, Mr. Edmund. Good morning, commissioners. I got the pleasant part of talking about what we've actually been able to do with the funding from these previous few rounds. And I do want to just add a little bit of detail and color on to one of the points Mr. Edmund brought up. The rest of the $5 fee allocation is going to fund county bridges and other projects, which has helped us enable to repair or replace or rehabilitate 35 different bridges just in the last eight years. 15 of those 35 have been utilizing that $5 fee funding. So just to remind everybody that this project, every time you're paying that $5 fee, which I just did a month or so ago, it's going to useful projects all around the county. But for the specific $5 fee allocation going to the county transportation program, for the next slide, Kelly, we've had five rounds of awards to date, starting in 2018 and moving through 2022 last year, which has awarded just over $5 million in actual county allocations. But the important part is that $18.8 million in total transportation investment has been leveraged, whether that's municipal funds that are matching grants, or even state grants that are coming in to make all of these projects happen. There's a total of 42 projects that have been funded across 28 different municipalities, funding all types of different projects, from congestion relief and traffic signal upgrades to new bridges or even pedestrian improvements. On the next slide, just to put it in even starker terms, we've had 42 projects awarded, and we're up to 18 in total that have been completed, with another five currently under construction. On the next slide, you'll see the map of where these projects are across the county. Everything that's circled in the green circles are the ones that have actually been completed. Paperwork has been submitted to us, and we're in the process of getting those funds back out to the municipalities in terms of our reimbursement process. On the next slide, we'll start looking at some of the pictures of things that have actually been funded. As a reminder, back in year one, we matched with PennDOT's Green Light Go program to specifically target the signal upgrades across 18 different municipalities. So Warsetor Township at 363 and Stump Hall Road, as well as 363 and 73, funding traffic signal upgrades. And then if you continue down Route 73 a bit into Whitpain, 73 and Penland Blue Bell Pike was also upgraded. In year two, we moved into a different iteration of the program, trying to fund a broader cross-section of projects. So you see the pedestrian signal upgrades at Seventh Street and Main in Royers Ford, as well as intersection improvements to Flower Town Road and Joshua Road in White Marsh. And then on the next slide, some of the latest projects that are completed that were awarded back in year three include the rehabilitation of the Pruss Hill Road Bridge in Lower Pots Grove, as well as new installations of stormwater bumpouts in Norberth. This particular shot is on Windsor Avenue near Essex Road. So there's a number of different projects that we're trying to work on. Year four and year five are just getting underway, and hopefully we'll have pictures of them to show in the months and years ahead. I will turn it back over to Matt to discuss what we're planning for, for year six.
All right, thank you, Matt. Kelly? So what to know about year six? Next slide. So nothing really changes in terms of the program's parameters. Still $1 million in the capital budget for the program. The applicants are still restricted to our 62 municipalities. There could be public-private partnerships, but municipalities still must take the lead and make the application and provide the official match. We still only fund construction, maximum award of $500,000, and the local match, which we've tiered so that our smaller municipalities with a smaller tax base, we'll put it that way, that they are still able to submit for something without having to put up a big match. We want to make sure the playing feels as even as possible between the larger townships with the big tax bases and, say, our smaller boroughs that are limited. So that's how we have that. Nothing changes. Next slide. But there are some things, though, that do change this year. So in terms of eligibility, this is the big one. We've seen a lot of applications and even awards on pedestrian-focused projects. And while we, you know, we do like funding those things, and those things are important in our county, we want to make sure that over the course of the six years, that this program is funding a wide, diverse variety of projects. And so we're going to put a little bit more focus this year on traditional road, bridge, and signal projects. It doesn't mean that pedestrian facilities can't be part of them, but we don't want that to be the primary focus. We want it to be the secondary focus so that we can make sure that we're also putting some investment onto our roads and on mobility for the motoring public, which is a big focus of where this money comes from statutorily. I'll get into that some other time. Scoring, we've included some equity parameters into, oh, let's go back one slide. Thanks. We baked some equity parameters into project impact so that we're accounting for the fact that some of our municipalities have disadvantaged communities in them and, you know, can compete on an even scale with other places. And our goal overall this time around is to possibly award fewer projects, have some larger grants, and hopefully make a greater impact. We're going to try to see this year if we can refocus the program a little bit on that approach. Kelly? So last couple slides here, what comes next? This is our timeline. The reason why we are here in early April, even though the application period doesn't open for two months, is because we want to make sure the word gets out to our municipal partners, that they know this is coming. We've been doing that for several years. We've found it's very effective. We know that our municipalities need time to figure out what to apply for. If we announced this today and it opened tomorrow, and we said, you know, you got a month or two to figure this out, they're going to scramble. They're going to call our office, they're going to say, oh, what do you think of this? And they're going to have 1,000 questions. So what we do is we make in two months into the timeline, April and May, for municipalities to kick it around, and then they get another two months to pull their application together. So that's really four months of preparation time, which is really important for them. When the application period ends at the end of July, then we go into selection mode. And so August, September are the times where we select projects. And it's important to stress to you as commissioners, to the public, to anyone who's interested, that we have a selection committee made up of diverse voices. We have, obviously, planning commission staff. We have staff from other different county departments, a wide cross-section there. But we also have members of our planning commission board and our transportation authority board. These are people who are civic leaders, who serve as appointed officials within the county, they're not elected, but they are, in many cases, the voice of the average county citizen. So they're part of that as well. And there's probably 15 of us. So we all score, we all debate, we all figure out what the best projects are. And that's how we get to that in August, September. And then in October, we bring the recommended projects to you, the commissioners, for a hopeful award. Next slide. And then one final thing, this is new this year. We've heard from you as commissioners in the past about the importance of making sure that we talk one-on-one and reach out to our municipal partners. And so we are going to be holding a webinar on Wednesday, April 19th, at 11:00 a.m., so that our municipal partners can hear about the changes that we've just talked about but in a little bit more detail. They can ask questions, they can spend some time with us, and we can get our message out to them. And so we're going to have details and everything posted in the next couple of business days at the website for the program itself, montco PA dot org slash county transportation program. Kelly? And with that, we are happy to take any questions that you might have.
All right. Thank you, Matt and Matt. I just want to clarify, you talked about bridges, and then, of course, that would be non-county-owned bridges, that we have the bridges in the county that township owns.
Yes, yes.
Right? So we want to make sure that they can participate as well.
Correct. Yes, and you saw one of them on the screen, the Prussel Road Bridge.
All right. Thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, next up, it is National Public Health Week, and I think we have Christina Miller, our Public Health Administrator, virtually, and Meredith Pelzman, mini-health educator here in the room.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you first for the opportunity to join you all this morning and to recognize National Public Health Week. We observe National Public Health Week during the first full week of April each year. This week offers an opportunity both for us to recognize the people who help to keep our communities healthy and safe and to shine a light on some of the issues that are important in our field. When we think of public health, the first thing that may come to mind is response to outbreaks of disease like COVID. And while public health is particularly visible during emergencies, much of the work of public health is in prevention, forming the building blocks that allow everyone the opportunity to achieve their best possible health. And public health professionals devote their time and skills to their community every day, often in far less visible ways. They help to make sure that when we walk into a restaurant, the food is safe to enjoy, that our water is clean. They work with communities to build gardens that feed families. They make sure that immunizations are available to assault to help protect against illnesses like measles, shingles, and the flu. They make sure that the car seat that will carry a child home for the first time and every time after is correctly installed. Public health professionals work with and for residents and partner organizations every day in big and small ways so that everyone in our community has that opportunity to live their healthiest possible life. And this week provides us that chance to recognize and honor those public health workers that serve our community every day. So to all of my colleagues in Montgomery County's Office of Public Health and in every community, I am proud and grateful to work alongside of you, and I thank you for the many ways that you serve our community. As I mentioned, in addition to recognizing our public health workers, National Public Health Week gives us a chance to highlight some of the issues that are important to protecting and preserving our community's health. My colleague Meredith Pelzman will talk through some of those topics like mental health, violence prevention, and our connection to one another through community. And in this vein of highlighting issues that are important to the health of our community, I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge that National Public Health Week is immediately followed by Black Maternal Health Week, which highlights both the continued increase in maternal mortality in the United States, particularly impacting Black birthing people, and the practices and policies that can enable all children and their parents to have a healthy and safe start. I encourage everyone to speak out and participate in any one of the many panel discussions or community events organized by leaders in this field next week. With that, I am delighted to introduce my colleague, Meredith Pelzman. She is our Community Engagement Coordinator, and she will walk us through the focus and themes for this year's National Public Health Week. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. Good morning, everyone. My name is Meredith, and I work in the Office of Community Information and Education as Community Health Engagement Coordinator. This week is sponsored by the American Public Health Association, and the overall theme for this year is celebrating cultural differences in health. Why do we celebrate this week? Well, the goal is to ensure that our communities are healthy, safe, and connected. We are all necessary to improving our own public's health. By coming together and learning from our communities and our cultures, we can use our collective power and knowledge to make the greatest impact. The daily themes listed in this presentation will show how issues are connected, how they have an influence on each other, and how they affect different communities. So connection with community is vital in living your healthiest life, whether it's virtual, physical, or both. We must work together to ensure all communities have access to affordable housing, education, food, and transportation. If you or somebody knows struggling with a need but don't know where to turn, call Community Connections at six one zero two seven eight three five two two to speak to a professional who can give you the resources and services of Montgomery County. Next. So violence is an ongoing public health threat because it creates more obstacles to living a healthier life. When we understand the causes of violence in our communities, it gives us a better chance at creating effective prevention strategies. We actively support initiatives such as family centers in Norristown and Pottstown and in-home visiting programs directed towards the safety of children and young adults. Next. We can work together and make sure everyone has the right and ability to access safe, affordable, and individual care when making reproductive and sexual health decisions. The Montgomery County Department of Health and Human Services strives to be equitable, knowledgeable, sensitive, and a welcoming resource. Next. Each year, one in five Americans will experience mental illness. Prevention, early detection, and treatment can lead to improved physical, mental, and community health. There are a total of six community behavioral centers throughout the county which offer many behavioral health services. If you or someone you know needs mental health services, call the Community Behavioral Health Center in your local area. Rural communities are some of the most vulnerable populations. We can work towards a more robust, inclusive public health system that ensures everyone is reached. Individuals living in rural areas have less access to services because of fewer providers, facilities, and transportation. We have offices located throughout the county, and we also travel to community connection expansion sites to meet families. We can close the health equity gap by reducing health disparities in insurance, increasing physical access, and improving ability of care, and building more inclusive programs and communities. We are focusing on health literacy to assist individuals find and understand information and services that inform health-related decisions and actions for themselves and for others. Next. Access to fresh, quality, and nutritious food is the foundation of living a healthy life. We can work together to advocate and provide access to food. We are taking action with numerous partners in Montgomery County to combat food insecurity to ensure neighbors not only have enough food, but also have enough culturally appropriate foods. So let's continue partnering across public and private spheres to create healthier people. We hope during National Public Health Week, you will spark new conversations and engage new stakeholders in your communities. The future of public health depends on collaboration and our commitment to making it accessible to all. Together, we make our communities happier, healthier, and stronger. And these are the resources. Next page. And you can follow us on Twitter, LinkedIn, Instagram, Facebook. Our handle is HHS at Monco PA. And is there any questions or comments?
Thank you, Meredith, for your presentation, and thank you and all your colleagues for the work you do, not just this week, but all week around, and acknowledge Ms. Miller's leadership of the department. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you as well.
You have a nice day.
Appreciate it.
All right. Next, our Clerk of Courts Lori Schreiber is going to speak about the Second Chance Month event.
Good morning.
Welcome.
I want to thank you, commissioners, for giving me a few minutes to speak today. So each April, the U.S. Department of Justice celebrates Second Chance Month, recognizing the importance of helping individuals in their successful reentry from incarceration each year. This year, on March thirty-first, President Biden proclaimed April twenty twenty-three as Second Chance Month. In one of the paragraphs from his proclamation, he states, "I believe in redemption, but for hundreds of thousands of Americans released from state and federal prisons each year, or the nearly eighty million who have an arrest or conviction record, it is not always easy to come by. A criminal record can prevent them from landing a steady job, a safe place to live, quality healthcare, or the chance to go back to school. It can keep them from ever getting a loan to buy a home, start a business, or build a future. It can bar them from voting. As a result, three-quarters of formerly incarcerated people remain unemployed a year after their release, and joblessness is a top predicator of recidivism. We are not giving people a real second chance." To help improve the chances for people impacted by the criminal justice system either reentering the community or the families of those who may be incarcerated, the Clerk of Courts Office is sponsoring what we hope is our first annual reentry resource fair. We have had a tremendous outpouring of interest with approximately twenty-five different organizations currently scheduled to be there on Friday, April fourteenth. You can see the details on the slide. In addition to the resource tables, we plan on having an expungement clinic and a wellness area for the participants. So my staff, particularly Mandy Garofalo, sitting right over here, have worked very hard to make this event go smoothly, and we hope to expand it next year. The details, as I said, are on the slide, as far as the date, the time, it's at the Human Services Building, and we hope everyone can help us spread the word about both this event and also that April has been declared Second Chance Month. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. Any questions? All right. Thank you for your leadership on this issue. All right. We will now have public comment on matters appearing on the agenda, just limited to two minutes. Ms. Cofrancisco. We're not, we're not reading the rules. Rules are in the back and posted. People know.
First, for matters appearing on the agenda, we have Giuseppe Crini Monticelli, who has Agenda Item Comment on item K seventeen.
Giuseppe Crini Monticelli, Concha Hocken, and Springfield. Case seventeen is going to deal with a contract renewal for the District Attorney and Health and Human Services. It's a forensic interviewing child advocacy center of Montgomery County, doing business as Mission Kids of East Norrington. This could be four hundred and ten thousand. I would highly urge the commissioners to approve this item, but I am a bit suspicious of how these funds are being properly used by Mission Kids. They, in my experience, they interview the victim, but if the victim has any witnesses, the DA's office interferes and goes ahead and picks and chooses what witness gets to go ahead and speak to Mission Kids and have a forensic interview. You know, if they have some significant detail about the incident, I think it would be very, very imperative to get the witness to be forensically interviewed along with the victim. And to, to my experience, as of recent in January of twenty-one, that does not happen. So I would be very concerned that these funds are not being fully properly used, but even with that caution of regards, I would still highly urge that the commissioners go ahead and vote in the affirmative for passing this.
Next, for public comment on agenda items, we have Pauline Braccio with Agenda Item D, E, and K.
Good morning, Pauline Braccio, Townes and Township. I was not aware that there was a group out there on Monday for the sexual assault awareness because I would have joined them, and I would have made it clear that our chair of the commissioners is a sexual assault predator. You know, I was drugged, and then he took me and raped me. And because I was drugged, I don't have a, a linear memory. It's like snapshots. so the thing that I wanted to compare was how he kept my mouth shut and how this board has been keeping my mouth shut for four and a half years. While Ken was raping me, he had his hand on my mouth. I regained consciousness long enough to know that he was raping me and that it was Ken, and he was laughing at me while he was doing that. I have no memory after that until the next morning. This happened up at a retreat for leaders of the student activities clubs from Montgomery County Community College. And I think he was a board member or is a board member, I don't know if he still is, but any of the college. But anyway, so my next memory was waking up in the cabin, my own cabin. So I have no idea how I got from being raped to getting back to the cabin. And there are witnesses who did not want to come forward because they were afraid of Shapiro. Well, it looks like Shapiro has abandoned you at this point, so maybe they will come forward, I don't know. The other thing that he did to shut my mouth was he and his friends started a rumor on campus when we got back to school that I was drunk all weekend. I was never drunk. I was drugged, and because they did that, I had no credibility. There was nothing I could have said at the time. And people ask women, why do you wait so many years to come forward? Well, that's why, because we're prevented from saying anything when it happens.
Ms. Russell, sorry, but your time is up.
Yes, I'm sure you're really sorry. Thank you.
Next, for Agenda Item Public Comment, we have David Morgan on item L three.
I'm David Morgan from Amberg. Good morning. I'm noting that L three is a construction project of two point nine million for a garage, and I encourage the commissioners to, when these items are listed, to note the location, the purpose, and if it's a Justice Center expense, because we know that there's been a high amount of spending for that capital project. I happen to look across the street just today, and it's very expansive, each floor. To imagine courthouses, courtrooms in each floor seems to be really, not many floors are needed, cover, I think it's eighteen courtrooms. And I'm just wondering if we're utilizing our funds well with what we have, maybe if other uses can be made for that project across the street called the Justice Center. Perhaps housing homeless or some other way of getting hopefully, hopeful remedies for the homeless situation would be considered. We now have this April, our tax bills have been coming in for the properties in Amberg and other townships, townships and boroughs, and so we noticed there's an eight percent increase in that bill that we're paying. And last year was an eight percent increase, and the year before was a five percent increase, largely driven by this project across the street. So if those workers could just be put towards use, we might be able to realize, well, for helping homeless, that might be a good use of our funds, because it is a drain on everyone's expenses in this day of high inflation. I noticed also in the presentation by Mr. Edmonds, there was mention of a webinar where information would be coming out, where questions could be asked. Wouldn't that be really good for this historic project to have a town hall, a tabulation of the expenses, money spent each year on this project? That would be really helpful for us to know. So we encourage that communication. On the website, put the data out for the spending each year.
Ms. Rowan, your time is up.
We're going to ask Maureen Laska, who's virtual. Maureen, do you have Agenda Item Comment or Public Comment?
Yes. Good morning. My name is Marlene Laska, Upper Providence Township, Oaks precinct. As a county, we need to start evaluating whether voting machines in our precincts help or present too high a security risk. For the November twenty-second election, I worked the polls in my precinct. Oaks is the largest precinct in the Upper Providence Township. We had a total of sixteen hundred and ninety-nine ballots with a very large turnout. People were actually out, out, out the door until around two p.m. We also had an average of over ten people working the polls. The bottom line is that it is very doable to have hand counted those ballots, especially given only a total of sixteen hundred and ninety-nine ballots with large turnout and number of people working the polls. Machines create doubt, and doubt suppresses the vote. As a county, we have to be cognizant of what doubt does to the voter. Machines create doubt because they can be hacked and account manipulating. We know it is, it is a county decision to implement election, elections using machines. Hopefully, you saw the proof of concept that happened yesterday in Osage County, Missouri. As a board and in sync with the Board of Elections, we can start evaluating whether Montgomery County, Pennsylvania should continue using the machines or go to hand counting our ballots, like what happened in Osage County, Missouri, did. Thank you.
We'll continue with general public comment. We will go to Giuseppe Crini Monticelli.
Giuseppe Crini Monticelli, Concha Hocken, and Springfield. So I want to talk about that Elmwood Zoo stuff and how people can get some of their tax dollars back from that. And that would be going to your local libraries. Your local library is going to have memberships to the Elmwood Zoo, and, you know, the Elmwood Zoo is a fabulous thing that our county has that a lot of other counties don't have. I want to speak about the election board meetings. It would be nice to have a schedule of the election board meetings, if there are going to be any, ahead of time. I know there's going to be meetings that you can't have on the schedule, that you need to come up with, but when you're certifying the election, at least let the public know a week in advance. This past general primary, by having it up for only the law required amount of time, it doesn't give enough amount of citizens' ability to plan ahead and come for when you're certifying the election. I mean, forty-eight hours? I mean, come on. That's not right. Something that's very small, but I want to use my time here that I found very quite interesting is at these trails here in the county, like the green ribbon and all of that, we have placards that are, that are there, and they list the county commissioners. It's like that stuff hasn't been updated since twenty fifteen. Josh Shapiro being the chair and Val being the vice? I mean, this stuff hasn't been updated in years. So do you never update that? Is that something you always keep the same as always, like when the park was established or that trail? That's what I would wonder. Thank you.
Next, for general public comment, we have Stephanie Curson.
Good morning. My name is Stephanie Curson, and I live in West Norrden. I'm a teacher, and I've taught in Norristown for the past twenty years. I spend my free time advocating for animals through different nonprofit organizations, and I walk my dog at the Norristown Farm Park just about every day. We love enjoying the scenery and the wildlife as we walk the different paths. And when the different paths. And when the deer hunts were more frequent, it would crush me to picture the animals that I'd see on our walks being killed and their families being destroyed. One year, my dog and I even came across a bloody leg of a deer that had been killed in one of those hunts. And I'm here today to ask you to consider non-lethal means of deer population control, instead of having the deer hunts and the deer coals at the Norristown Farm Park. We know that deer love their family, just like us. Deer feel pain and fear, just like us. Deer want to live and raise their babies, just like us. Wildlife are running out of places to live, and no fault of their own. The habitats that they have are being torn down and constantly built on. The Norristown Farm Park is home to such beautiful animals, and they have nowhere else to go. Our job should be to protect them and not kill them in the only place that they can be safe. There are more humane ways of managing deer population, and other townships are utilizing them. I'm asking if you would be open to meeting with the group Animal Protection League of New Jersey, or the Wildlife Management Team from the Humane Society, to discuss these methods, and if they could be implemented successfully at the farm park.
Please make sure we have your information.
Okay.
And we'll leave that. Thank you for coming.
Next, for general public comment, we have Pauline Braccio.
Pauline Braccio, Tementson Township. I want to address my comment to Jamila. This, you talked last month about women. It was Women's Month. This month, it's Sexual Assault Month. You're sitting next to a man who is a sexual predator, and I'm just wondering, how long is it going to take you to call for his resignation? Joe never did call for his resignation, and neither did Valerie. No one has. He should not be sitting in that seat. If the Governor of New York, Cuomo, can be ousted, and he didn't rape anybody, okay? And I want people to understand, a dirty joke, or a copping of a feel, is not the same as rape, at all. Not even close. So why is this man still here after all these years? There are women, his assistant, Shannon, left immediately when I made it public. Shelley, the predecessor to Stein, she left right at the end of the year. And another good friend of Ken's, I won't say her full name, but her first name starts with a G, and then another G. She actually met with me and told me that she cut off all support for him when he was running in 2019. And she told him, "Don't come back to my town. I don't expect any more money from us." All three women were Democrat. All three women were very close to Ken, and they rightfully so deserted him. And I just want to know, how long is it going to take for you to actually make a statement against this man? And I don't have any hope that you ever will, Joe. Very disappointing, because when Valerie had me falsely arrested, you were in that room, and you knew everything that went on. You came to court, and you left because Stein told you to leave. So, I'm really not understanding. You know, either it's content of character, or it's skin color. So what is it, Jamila? That's all I want to know. You're a woman, you want to be honorable. Be honorable. Thank you.
Next, for general public comment, we have Ali Shervini.
Hey, guys. It's good to see you again. Sorry, Ken. Okay, good morning, Commissioners, first and foremost. We must thank Jesus for today. My name is Ali Shervini with the Norristown Company. You've seen and heard me offer to partner with the county to reduce residents' cost of living, alleviate concentrations of poverty, and lower dependence on federal government. Today, I'm here to ask for your help in addressing another burden on individuals facing economic hardship. Banks, utilities, cell phone, internet, television providers operating in Pennsylvania prey upon those struggling to make ends meet. From NSF fees, which have no inherent costs at institutions, to automated restoral charges, and most commonly, late fees are nearly doubling the cost of households, really, the cost of living. Rather than incentivizing consumers to maintain obligations, it is burying those already struggling to make ends meet. It has become so commonly applied that companies depend on it as a major revenue source. So what I'm asking is, with your connection to the Governor, we hope that you would propose the introduction of a law prohibiting companies from continuing this abusive practice. Thank you. And it's well within the two minutes, this time.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Happy Easter.
Happy Easter to you, too.
Next, for general public comment, we have David Morgan.
David Morgan from Amhore, and I'd like to first mention that we do have a stopwatch running now. And to ask the Commissioners, how often have you spoken with a ticker going on like that? You have a two-minute time limit, and you have to finish. So, I admire all the speakers who've come today, that they've taken the time to get here and deal with restrictions. Another part that they have to face is, what is germane? The definition of what is germane? And for topics, I would say that anything that's humane is germane, because we have, from the unborn children, who are human, with their own DNA, who have fingers and toes by the eighth week in first trimester, up to seniors, seniors trying to live in the streets in Norristown. We have all those humane issues to deal with that occurred at this meeting for the county. So I would encourage, if you think that a speaker is interrupted, to maybe take and to have a step back and say, "Well, should that speaker maybe clarify something?" So that interruptions of vital life issues are allowed. And even what comes before the county commissioners, part of the statement here, well, the county commissioners mentioned during the Super Bowl football. So I spoke one time on football, and how there's life applications from football, such as when Tony Junji spoke as a coach to a crowd in Washington, he mentioned that he has, we know that he has eight adopted children. And that is definitely, adoption is part of county business. So I encourage that we really think carefully about letting speakers speak their whole time without interruptions, so clarity of thought happens, sentences are finished. And I think that would be something that you'd like to eagerly hear, and not have to be told not to hear. So please consider that. We know this is a week for Easter, and Jesus is the resurrection of life, so consider life at all stages in your deliberations. Thank you.
Mr. Morgan, I saw your violin performance at the Senior Center. It was very good.
It was what?
It was on Facebook, so I don't, I didn't, I don't know.
That concludes our public comment.
Okay.
I have an objection.
We will now move on to the approval of the minutes.
I have an objection.
I will make a motion to approve.
Your objection is noted, Ms. Braccio.
No, you don't know what it is yet. Are you going to do this again? I'm going to speak my objection. Ken does not even listen to anybody. He was playing on his phone when, I think Meredith was up here, and while Mr. Morgan was speaking, he was rolling his eyes.
You have the right to make an objection, and it's noted.
And I object to his even still being here. Jamila, I hope you help me out here.
We are going to make a motion. I will make a motion to approve the March 16, 2023, minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners meeting. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Minutes are passed. We'll now move on to resolutions. Commissioner's appointment to the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission. I will make a motion that Kennedy Lawrence Jr. be appointed as the Commissioner's representative to the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission, and to designate Scott France, Executive Director of the Montgomery County Planning Commission, as the first alternate to Commissioner Lawrence, with Matt Edman of the County Planning Commission designated as the second alternate, to serve at the pleasure of the county commissioners, and in accordance with the current duly adopted bylaws. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Is there any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes?
I'm a negative vote.
Okay. Motion passes two to one. Next, we'll move on to Commissioner's appointment to the Pennsylvania Convention Center Authority. I will make a motion that pursuant to the Pennsylvania Convention Center Authority Act, the Commissioners hereby appoint Jamila Winder, vice Chair of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners, to the Pennsylvania Convention Center Authority, to serve the unexpired term of Valley Archos that is set to expire on December 31, 2023. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Is there any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes?
I'm a negative vote.
Motion passes two to one. Next, we'll move on to Commissioner's reappointments to the Montgomery County Industrial Development Authority. I will make a motion to reappoint Elizabeth Moy, Jay Langford, Adam Silverman, and Jason Salas to the Montgomery County Industrial Development Authority, for terms to begin immediately and to expire on April 6, 2028, and to serve at the pleasure of the county commissioners, and in accordance with the current duly adopted bylaws. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Is there any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes?
I'm a negative vote.
Motion passes two to one. Move on to Personnel Law. Maureen Calder.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You should have in front of you the final copy of the Commissioners Department's personnel list. It is a three-page document dated Wednesday, April 5, 2023, with a timestamp of 10:30 a.m. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for consideration.
I will make a motion to approve the April 6, 2023 Personnel Presentation, as given by the First Assistant Solicitor, Maureen Calder, and authorize the proper county officials to execute the same. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Is there any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. And we'll move on to advertisements of bids and RFPs. Ms. O'Malley.
Yes, we have a bid on behalf of assets and infrastructure for restoration of the barn at Penny Packer Mills. The successful responder will provide structural repairs and exterior preservation to complete the Penny Packer Mills barn in Schwanxville. Contract will be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Two, bid on behalf of assets and infrastructure for fire pumps at the Eagleville Complex. The successful responder will provide two fire pumps with enclosures for the EOC Garage and Warehouse. Contract will be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Three, RFP on behalf of assets and infrastructure for construction inspection services for the replacement of County Bridge Number 38 in Hatborough Borough. The successful responder will provide full-time onsite construction oversight and inspection during the replacement of County Bridge Number 38, located on Moreland Avenue over a branch of the Penny Pack Creek. Contract will be awarded to the highest-rated responder. Four, RFP on behalf of assets and infrastructure for architectural and engineering services for the Willow Grove Annex renovation. The successful responder will provide and perform programming studies for various county departments currently located within the Annex in order to provide design services needed to enable renovation and rehabilitation of the building. Contract will be awarded to the highest-rated responder. Five, RFP on behalf of assets and infrastructure for construction management services for renovation of the Willow Grove Annex Building. The successful responder will provide construction management advisory services and work collaboratively with the county to provide services needed to enable renovation and rehabilitation of the building. Contract will be awarded to the highest-rated responder. Six, RFP on behalf of Health and Human Services for Healthy Homes Grant Program Administration Services. The successful responder will manage the program seeking to control radon, lead, and other home hazards in residential dwellings in approximately 50 housing units that have been determined to be at risk in Montgomery County. Contract will be awarded to the highest-rated responder. Seven, RFP on behalf of Health and Human Services for Your Way Home Housing Resource Center Operations. The successful responders will provide management services for Housing Resource Center operations that serve Montgomery County. Contracts will be awarded to the highest-rated responders. Eight, RFP on behalf of Health and Human Services for Housing Opportunities Fund Plan Development. The successful responder will provide strategic planning, analytical services, policy recommendations, and support to identify the best method to meet the goal of Homes for All Housing Opportunities Fund, to acquire and renovate vacant properties into affordable housing in Montgomery County. The primary objectives are to establish a program that will facilitate the redevelopment of acquired properties through strategic partnerships with developers, community organizations, lenders, and local governments, to improve quality of life, stabilize the tax base, and enhance economic activities that promote sustainable, healthy, and stable communities in a manner consistent with local government plans and priorities. Contract will be awarded to the highest-rated responder. All RFPs and bids are available on the county's purchasing website at www.montco PA.org/purchasing.
All right. I will make a motion to approve the preceding request for the advertisement of RFPs and bids, as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Barbara O'Malley, and authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Is there any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Awards of contract.
One, contract award, assets and infrastructure, human services center, building office renovations, 1430 DeKalb LG LLC of Brooklyn, New York, not to exceed $45,000. Contract provides for renovations in the Human Services Center of vacant space to office space for community connections navigate use. These renovations will allow the county to sublease a portion of its leased space to a nonprofit community tenant. The sublease will result in revenue generation for the county in excess of $100,000 after the cost of these renovations. Two, contract award, assets and infrastructure, rehabilitation of County Bridge Number 101 in Lower Frederick Township, Loftus Construction Incorporated of Cinnamons in New Jersey, $1,684,000. Contract provides for the rehabilitation of Montgomery County Bridge Number 101, old gravel pipe over Swamp Creek in Lower Frederick Township. Specification 6496 was viewed by 44 providers with two responses received. Contract is awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Three, contract award, assets and infrastructure, construction reimbursement for Church Road Bridge in Upper Marion Township, Upper Marion Transportation Authority of King of Prussia, PA, $53,978.88. Contract provides for previously agreed-upon reimbursement cost to the Upper Marion Transportation Authority for the replacement of Church Bridge Road in Upper Marion Township. Four, contract award, assets and infrastructure, ventilation system upgrade at the weapons training facility, Carries Heating and Air Conditioning Incorporated of Tinley Park, Illinois, $181,850. Contract provides for an upgrade to the existing ventilation control system for the indoor firing range. Small arms range ventilation system is proprietary. Eight, contract award, Commissioners, Public Right-of-Way Imagery Collection Software, IT Federal Sales LLC of Wyndham, New Hampshire, $2,136,360. Contract provides for the collection of approximately 6,000 miles of public right-of-way building and street-level imagery in Montgomery County. The 360-degree by 180-degree imagery capture will allow structures as high as five stories to be measured accurately, and pavement conditions and other infrastructure assets in the street can be determined. These images will be made available for county, municipal governments, first responder agencies, and public use at no charge. Regularly updated visual images will provide more up-to-date information for purposes of public safety, planning, law enforcement, and will integrate with existing county systems and software to enable more effective and efficient operation, and will allow county staff to accurately create and maintain state and federal mandated next-generation 911 GIS data. Contract is for a period of six years. System is available through a federal GSA contract. Six, contract award, District Attorney Leadership Training, BSV Leadership LLC of Denver, Colorado, $30,000. Contract provides for organizational leadership training session for District Attorney Office staff. Training is proprietary. Seven, contract award, District Attorney System Integration Services, Integrated Security Systems of Sodderton, PA, $49,042. Contract provides for the integration of the recently-acquired ShotSpotter gunshot detection system into the existing Genetech video management systems at the Norristown and Pottstown Police Departments. Services are proprietary. Eight, contract award, Health and Human Services, in-home services for older adults, multiple providers. Contract provides supplemental in-home service providers as needed for older adults in Montgomery County. RFP 2311 was viewed by 28 providers with seven responses received. Contracts are awarded to the highest-rated responders. Contacts are for a period of May 1, 2023, through June 30, 2024, with two optional annual renewal terms. Awarded responders, The Right Touch Incorporated of Philadelphia, PA, Senior Helpers NE of Elkins Park, PA, and My Preference Home Care Services of Rory's Ford, PA. Nine, contract award, Information and Technology Solutions, software training and support services for SharePoint Projects, Eastern Business Software Incorporated of Brew Mall, Pennsylvania, $90,000. Contract provides for a software training and support services, technical consultants. Contract is for a one-year term, beginning 6/21/2023. Services are available through a PA state contract. Ten, contract award, Information and Technology Solutions, Microsoft Premier Support Services, Microsoft Corporation of Redmond, Washington, $384,984. Contract provides assistance and support for problem resolution services for Microsoft products. Contract is for the period of 4/12/2023 to 4/11/2024. Eleven, contract award, Public Safety Landscaping Services, Mid-Atlantic Property Maintenance LLC of Lansdale, PA, $38,619.88. Contract provides for landscape maintenance services for the Public Safety Training Campus Rescue Role Training Facility in Concha Hocken. Specification 6498 was viewed by 12 providers with two responses received. Contract is awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Contract is for an initial period of April 1, 2023, to December 31, 2023, with two optional annual renewal terms. Twelve, contract award, Public Safety Software, Eastern Communications LTD of Long Island City, New York, $24,526.54. Contract provides comshop asset tracking software and support for emergency communication radios. Software streamlines and consolidates technology capabilities, which improves the county's ability to support first responder agencies. Software and support is available through a PA state contract. Thirteen, contract award, Public Safety 911 Phone System Upgrade. Entrado Life and Safety Solutions Corporation of Omaha, Nebraska, $72,813. Contract provides for an upgrade to the current 911 phone system for compatibility with next-gen 911 call delivery as per PA state compliance. Services are proprietary. Fourteen, contract award, Rolling Stock Vehicles of Multiple Departments, Whitmoyer Auto Group of Mountjoy, PA, $140,000. Contract provides for two Chevrolet 2023 Silverado 1500 LT with cap for Office of Public Health, and Chevrolet 2023 Traverse AWD for the correctional facility. Vehicles are available through a PA CoStarz contract. Fifteen, contract award, Sheriff's Emergency Lighting Installation for Vehicles, KML Transport of Aston, PA, $23,559. Contract provides for emergency lighting installations for multiple vehicles in use by the Sheriff's Department. Installation services are available through a PA CoStarz contract. Sixteen, contract renewal, District Attorney and Coroner Drug Testing and Forensic Toxicology Services, National Medical Services of Willow Grove, PA, $1,205,000. Contracts provide drug testing and forensic toxicology services for the District Attorney and Coroner's offices. This is the third of three optional annual renewal terms for the 2023 term. Provider is the only firm that meets the requirements of the county. Seventeen, contract renewal, District Attorney and Health and Human Services, Forensic Interviewing, Mission Kids of East Norton, PA, $410,000. Contract provides for forensic interviewing and family and victim advocacy services for law enforcement officials investigating allegations of child sexual abuse as per RFP 2071. This is the second of four available annual renewals. Eighteen, contract renewal, Information and Technology Solutions, Document Management System, RSM US LLP of Davenport, Iowa, no cost. Contract provides for a replacement of the current countywide electronic document management system as per RFP 2109. This is the first of nine optional annual renewal terms. No additional funding will be required for this renewal term. Nineteen, contract renewal, Public Safety Records Management System, CSI Technology Group of Keesby, New Jersey, $302,550. Contract provides for a countywide law enforcement record management system. System allows sharing of information among all county criminal justice agencies. Renewal is valid for the period of 5/14/2023 to 5/13/2024. Twenty, contract amendment, Finance, Widow Bryant's Washington, DC, no cost. Original contract provides for emergency management consultation and advisory services for federal cost recovery reimbursement relating to the COVID-19 emergency. Amendment provides for a no-cost time extension of the contract through 6/30/2023 for final closeout and audit support. And there are seven contract renewals and nine amendments for Health and Human Services. Providers and services are listed at the end of the agenda and at the back of the room.
All right, thank you. Give you a second to take a breath, get some water before I make the motion.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the preceding awards of contract as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Is there any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes.
Contract award for Assets and Infrastructure. One, contract award, Information and Technology Solutions, Wi-Fi Installation, Eagleville Complex, E Plus Technologies, Inc. of King of Prussia, PA, $220,275.75. Contract provides for Wi-Fi equipment and service installation for the new Coroner Archives and EOC Warehouse and Garage. Equipment and services are available through a PA CoStarz contract. Two, contract award, Assets and Infrastructure Office Building Renovations, NOR Incorporated of Philadelphia, PA, $316,056. Contract provides architectural and engineering services for the renovation of 18 West Erie Street Office Building in Norristown for the use by the Public Defender's Office. RFP 2308 was viewed by 52 providers with five responses received. Contract is awarded to the highest-rated responder. Three, contract award, Construction of a Maintenance Building, Multiple Contractors, $2,906,870. Contract provides for the construction of a maintenance building at Lower Percaman Valley Park. Specification 6490 was viewed by 51 providers with nine responses received. Following providers submitted the lowest responsive and responsible bids. General Construction, N.A. Russo Corporation of Sweetsboro, New Jersey, Electrical Contracting Services, AGM Electric Incorporated of Chester Township, PA, Plumbing Contracting Services, Herschberg Mechanical LLC of Willow Grove, PA, and Mechanical Contracting Services, Shannon A. Smith Incorporated. Four, contract amendment, Fire Protection Services, One Montgomery Plaza, Guy M. Cooper Incorporated of Willow Grove, PA, no cost. Original contract provided fire protection services for the construction of a new electrical infrastructure system in One Montgomery Plaza. Amendment provides for delay, project delays due to installation and inspection of the new fire pump for the building.
All right, I will make a motion to approve the preceding awards of contract as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Is there any board comment? We'll move on to the vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes.
Awards of contract, Southeast PA Regional Task Force. One, contract award, Computer Equipment and Licensing, CDW Government of Chicago, Illinois, $129,679. Contract provides for computer network switch upgrades with licensing for the Raven Interoperable Communication System for the region. Equipment and licensing is available through a PA CoStarz contract. Two, contract award, School Security Communications Upgrade, Mutual Link Incorporated of Wallingford, Connecticut, $81,941. Contract provides for an upgrade to the Mutual Link Technology Security System at Ford Chester County High Schools. System is sole source. Three, contract amendment, Emergency Response Vehicle, GLSayer Incorporated of Conshohocken, PA, $1,353. Original contract provided a special operations logistics response truck for the Bucks County Department of Emergency Services. Amendment provides for increased manufacturing costs due to pricing of raw materials.
I'll make a motion to approve the preceding awards of contract on behalf of the Southeast PA Regional Task Force as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Is there any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Do we have closing commissioner comments?
I'd just like to take a moment to wish everyone a happy Passover and happy Easter, and it was mentioned earlier, but it's an important time of the year, and enjoy that with your families.
Okay, I will announce that we have our upcoming meetings, the Board of Commissioners meeting on April 20, and an election board meeting on Tuesday, April 11, at 12:30 p.m. And I'll make a motion to adjourn the April 6, 2023, meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? We'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Meeting adjourned. And we will move into Salary Board. The controller is here virtually.
Good morning.
Passover, Controller Sanchez.
Thank you.
Oh, is there any public comment on Salary Board?
Members of Salary Board, you should have in front of you the final copy of the Salary Board list. It is a five-page document dated Wednesday, April 5, 2023, with a timestamp of 10:30. Of note, we have three employees retiring. Robin Smith from Courts after 25 years. Thomas Moore from Public Safety after 13 years. And Robert Kuzmic from Juvenile Probation after 28 years. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for Salary Board consideration.
Can I get a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Approve the April 6, 2023 Salary Board Presentation as given by First Assistant Solicitor, Maureen Calder, and authorize the proper county officials to execute the same. Is there any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. And we have a retiree acknowledgement. Chief Zelinski.
Morning, Commissioner. Sorry about that, thank you. As the chief of the Juvenile Probation Department, I appreciate the opportunity to recognize one of our employees, Robert Kuzmic. Robert is a 1990 graduate of Mansfield University, and he was appointed to the position as a juvenile probation officer in May of 1995, and assigned to an Eastern Geographic unit. In June of 2000, Robert earned his master's degree through the Juvenile Court Judges Program offered at Chippensburg University. In 2003, Robert was transferred and reassigned to the position of Court Investigator, where he remained until being promoted to a supervisory role in 2008. Robert's personnel file is showered with many letters of appreciation from outside agencies. Robert remained a supervisor until his retirement date of April 4, 2023. He shared with us that while retiring was bittersweet for him, he is very much looking forward to fishing trips with his grandson. We at Juvenile Probation wish Robert all of the best as he enters this new chapter in life. Thank you, Commissioners, again, for providing juvenile probation with the opportunity to recognize Robert Kuzmic.
Chief Zelinski, thank you for coming on and providing those words on Robert's behalf. And please give him our congratulations and best wishes for a safe and healthy retirement.
I will, thank you.
I will make a motion to adjourn the April 6, 2023, meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Is there any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Meeting is adjourned.